Well, such a pleasure to be here at our great Aback. It just gets greater by mistake. It's people like Dr. David Bridges, President, and I have a friend Mike Chasen and others who made this thing happen. Everywhere we go, I don't care if I'm a thousand miles away, I hear something about Aback. What we're gonna do is we're not gonna start the meeting right now. We're gonna start off by having a quick tour. Mike was the one who sent it to her. She said that might run about 12 minutes. And we welcome you all to go with us and share this wonderful building. And when we come back, we'd like to have the President say a few words. So at this point, if you will, that's Mike, I guess, if you want to say something before we go.
I'll be happy to. Thanks, Mayor. Today is a great day to be alive and have fun time before the morning only at Aback. We're certainly glad to welcome the Tifton City officials to our campus. We think it's Georgia State College of Choice in April tonight. We hope that you will agree with us. We're gonna take a very short tour of this building to allow you to get some of the flavor of what Tipton is all about. A little background, on February 20th, 1908, 26 students walked up those steps right out there for the Second District Agricultural and Mechanical School. You're saying, "Well, Mike, I thought it was Aback." Well, at that time, it was an area high school called the Second District A&amp;M School. It was actually a bidding war among five cities. Tifton was one of those cities. Thanks to Captain Tiff, Tifton got the bid over Albany, Pelham, Camilla, and Ashford. So Captain Tiff played a big part in Aback being in this location today. We can stand up and I'll walk around and I'll show you some things. We'll start looking around this room, the history room. I'll direct your attention back here to the Second District A&amp;M School history panel. That's where it all started. You'll see some pictures and some information about February 20th, 1908. We move around the room and some of the cabinets, some of the Aback memorabilia in these cabinets. Every single one of these cabinets is a treasure trove of Aback memorabilia. You can look inside and there's Aback artifacts in every single drawer and every single cabinet in this history room of the college. Move around the room, more memorabilia here, all the way back to some of the memories of the football team. Yeah, Aback used to have football. We had football when we were there at a high school. And then in 1924, we became South Georgia A&amp;M College and also had a football team at that time. In 1929, the state officials changed the name of the college from the South Georgia A&amp;M College to the Georgia State College for Men. And our football team was called the Rams at that time. And on consecutive years, beat the University of Miami in football, believe it or not. And the Rams had quite a team. And you'll see some of the memorabilia in there. A good friend of many people in this room, Jim Three from Pavo, Georgia, playing the school superintendent down in Montomb County and Lanier County. He was one of the players on the baseball team and the football team. And I tell you, Jim Three had some great memories before he passed away, believe it or not, on Aback's 100th birthday on February 20th, 2008. He was a great, great friend and supporter and alumnus of Aback. We move to this cabinet right here. It's a very special cabinet. Again, the drawers pull out and you can see some Aback memorabilia. But inside, in the glass top here, is a ketchup bottle, a Heinz ketchup bottle, believe it or not. And back in 2008, during the 100th birthday year of Aback, it sounds like we made this up, but we really didn't. It actually happened. We had one of our brown crew on the front of the campus. He was digging up a tree that had died. He dug up the stump and he found this Heinz ketchup bottle. And inside were two sheets of notebook paper. And on the top of those sheets, and you'll see the enlarged version here of those sheets of notebook paper, March 1st, 1922. The sophomore class in 1922 had written their names individually on two sheets of notebook paper, stuffed them down in a Heinz ketchup bottle, screwed on the top, dropped it in a hole, and they planted a tree right on top of the ketchup bottle to be dug up in 2008 on the 100th birthday of Aback. Strange but true, please believe it or not, perhaps, Mayor, but it actually happened. And I've had many, many grandchildren of those names that are on that list come to me and say, "Mike, I gotta see the ketchup bottle." And we show them the ketchup bottle right there. We talked to the Heinz company. That is exactly the type of bottle they made in 1922. So it's all verified, legit. And those people had a great day on that day, and we had a great day when we celebrated the 100th birthday of Aback. To move around the room, in 1933, we became Everham Baldwin Agricultural College. One of the mottos at that time was a wholesome and dedicated life on the soil. The college was changed from a four-year college to a two-year college mainly for agriculture, home economics, forestry, and wildlife. Now, Mayor, we still have some two-legged wildlife up here on the campus. We also have some four-legged wildlife on the campus, too. We have our own deer pen right here on the campus. And still a big part of the curriculum here at Aback. You'll see Building the Future, the panel there, Aback after World War II. During the war, the enrollment at Aback shrunk to less than 100 students. But the students did their thing for the war effort. They actually grew vegetables here at Aback, on the farm at Aback, to help feed the troops and send to the troops and that sort of thing. So Aback did its part during the war effort. After the war, George P. Donaldson became President in 1947. And I tell you, Aback really started on the move. Dr. Pete, one of the most renowned Presidents in the history of our college, got Aback headed in the right direction, not that the other Presidents didn't, but he was, traveled the state, the nation, spreading the good word about Aback. Then we move into the 21st century and beyond. So many great things have happened to our college. You see the history panel in the back of the room there. Back in 2010, the Georgia Museum of Agriculture and Historic Villages became a part of the campus and now is still a part of the campus, just a couple of miles down I-75. And we've been able to use that facility, use our students at that facility, and allow them to experience what life was like back in the 1890s. And it's really been a learning experience for them, particularly with one of our brand-new bachelor's degrees in rural studies. So it's made a terrific impact on those students who've been interns down at the Georgia Museum of Agriculture and Historic Village. In fact, we've got a cert making and cane driving coming up this weekend and next weekend, as a matter of fact. But the college has changed so much over the years. The number-one thing was back in 2006, when Dr. David Bridges became President, the only President in the history of Aback to have actually been a student at the college as well, class of 1978. And I tell you, on just before, a month and a half before he took office on July 1st, 2006, they announced what came down from Atlanta. Aback would be a state college of the university system of Georgia, offering four-year degrees, bachelor's degree right here at Aback. Our first class has began, the Bachelor's Degree Program, in January of 2008. We had 41 students majoring in four-year degrees. 2014, we have about 1,200 students majoring in bachelor's degrees at Aback. The enrollment today, 3,458 students. That's from about 24 different countries, 21 states, and 151 of Georgia's 159 counties. We draw students from just about every county in the great state of Georgia. Very proud of what's happened to Aback, very proud of the bachelor's degrees, two consecutive years of enrollment increases, and a tremendous economic impact on this community. President's gonna talk about that a little bit later on. But right now, I'd like for you to just take a little walking tour around the building and show you some sights and sounds of Tipton Hall at Aback. Okay. We'll go ahead on the main foyer here. Are you ready? All right. Please, everyone, come on in. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm not expecting any kind of, I've had a mic, probably just a minute, I'd like to take all the time I wanted, but that's only meant was really unwise. He should've been, even if politics involved, he should've known better than that on the eve of an election. But before I make my formal comments, I want to thank City Council for being here. Mayor, Julie, thank you for having this conversation. This is your house. Anytime you would like to come, you're certainly welcome to do so. We are always happy to have guests, whether you're a guest from town or a guest from afar. And before I begin my formal remarks, which will be brief, I want to give a couple of shout-outs. First of all, if you enjoyed your tour this evening and you would like to spend some more time, on Tuesday, December 2nd, am I right, Pam? Christmas Open House?
Yes.
We'll be here in this building, and we will have valet parking. You don't have to walk through parking lots. It will cost you a tip, and the tips all go to Ruth's Cottage and Patty Kate House. As many of you know, I served as chairman and board of that organization for quite a few years, and we try to support it. So our fraternities and sororities on campus will be happy to park your cars so that you don't have to walk through space and feel special. But please, come join us for some social time. And then the other is a shout-out. We learned this weekend a great piece of news. Mr. Andy Paul, who is a sophomore student at Aback from Lexington, Georgia, is an Ag Ed major here, was elected National FFA President in Louisville on Saturday. We have had a number of, we have had a number of national office holders, vice presidents, et cetera, in recent years, but we've never had a president. And Andy will spend the next 16 to 18 months literally traveling the world promoting FFA and promoting Aback in Tifton, Georgia. So we are really happy, happy for him. And as soon as we can get sorted out with FFA, what privileges we have and what privileges they have, and we're gonna put him on the speaking tour. So again, welcome to Aback. And I just wanted to share, let's see if technology's gonna put us down. Well, somebody's gonna advance the slides. I guess the battery died in the mountains. Or maybe I should reset it. No computers, the battery died in the mountains, so Lindsay, you're up. But they're not very many, so we won't have to. So I want to ask you a question before we start. How do you feel about Aback? What are your feelings? Give me the next one. So, I don't know. On your temperature meter, are you feeling very poor? Are you on the other end of the extreme? You know, do you feel excellent? If you don't relate to this sort of thing, give me the next slide. Maybe you've seen these before. How do you feel about Aback? Are you on that side? Are you on the left side? We know we can't make everybody happy. Now, the universal gauge we like to use around here these days is the next one, and we think of Bill Bristol every time we see this one. This is called the Awesome Meter, and it is never wrong. And I throw this edge, it's a little bit corny, but I want to talk to you a little bit about, you know, how do you feel about Aback? And where we're going, and what we have meant for this community, and what we can mean to this community. Most of us are in the awesome zone right there. Points of pride, Mike gave these, and let me give my disclaimer. If anything that I say contradicts what Mike said, believe what Mike said. I speak in generalities, Mike speaks in specifics. His are correct. Two consecutive years of enrollment growth, two consecutive years of record graduation. We're the only public institution in the USD and South Georgia that has grown in the last two years, and we're very proud of that. We have a graduation rate that is about 200% of the state college average. We're very proud of that as well. Our public-private venture's housing is full. And you may say, "What does that mean to the city of Tifton?" I'll tell you what it means. When every bed is full at Aback, that means that students fill into the community and rent apartments, rent houses, and rent accommodations. And those things have economic impact to this community. More than half of our students this past year, bachelor's degree graduates, had internships before they graduated. We believe internships are the future. Internships turn into jobs. You don't learn everything you need to know to get a good job in a classroom. At some point, you have to have done it. Our economic impact, including multiplier effect, is somewhere between $250 and $280 million a year. We'll talk about direct economic impact in a minute, but that's the number that's put out next. A few more points of pride. We're only one of 16 schools in the country that have been named Best Value School. You may say, "What is the best value school?" I answer, "It's..." I'm not quite sure, but I know it's good, Mike. The Best Value Program was started by one of the individuals that helped start the J.D. Power Consumer Report Awards. And we are one of 16 schools in the country that have been named as a value school, Best Value, only school in the state of Georgia. We have a diverse student body, as Mike said, students from all over the state, the country, and the world. We are quickly, very quickly becoming the number-one provider of human capital for the state's largest industry, agriculture. Our graduates from our biology program are doing great things. We're getting students, Johnny Evans and his group have done a great job. Our biology program focuses on preparing students for professional schools, for pharmacy school, medical school, dental school, et cetera, et cetera. Just got an email a while ago from Andrea Smith. She said her dental interview went exceedingly well and discussed it today. So we're very happy about that. We've had modest growth in our non-business concentrations in rural studies, and we anticipate that to continue. And our business program, the Stafford School of Business, is poised to be our next real hill of growth. So let me give you a couple of other details, and then I'm gonna challenge you about the future. I don't know, it went up about 2% this fall. Our FTV's about 5.3. Hit the button. Let me tell you what that is. Upper right-hand corner, the light blue, about a third of our students in the School of Ag and Natural Resources. In 2006, when I came here, we had 550 students in the School of Ag and Natural Resources. Today, we have over 1,100. Nursing is, science is next with about 20%, nursing about 20%, business about 10%, and then liberal arts and human sciences combined for about another 20%. We are very happy with our mix of students. We are a niche institution that fills a need, and we are having great success. Okay, but Mike told you this little story, and I apologize, this should've been blown up for this size room, but much importantly to you, generalities, folks, the communicated message here is the red line. In the spring 2008, we started bachelor's programs, as Mike said, with 41 students. We were 1,111 students this fall. We had a 23% increase in bachelor's students over just last year. We've got, all of our programs are growing. Bachelor's graduates are the key to the future of this institution. We have reached a third of our overall student body in bachelor's programs in a, at a rate that no other state college has even come close to. There's no comparison. So we are very pleased with that, and we think that's what will continue to carry us. You say, "How does that impact the city of Tifton and the community?" Well, instead of students coming here and staying two years, they're coming to stay four years. The longer they stay, the more they spend. The longer they stay, the more likely they are to find a job, a spouse, or other connections that will keep them in this community. So we think those things are all very positive. We have just announced a new strategic plan. I'm not gonna tell you about strategic plan tonight. You don't want to hear about that. But I do want to share a couple of things with you. Next slide, we just kicked it off this summer on the 14th of July. Through the year, we will be recording what we're accomplishing under our new plan. Next page, I'm going quickly. Why? You say, "Why do you need a new strategic plan?" If you fail a plan, guess what? Your plan is failed. We know that Aback's future is going to be much different than its past. We know that we have to create a future for ourselves. No one will take care of us. We must take care of ourselves. We must embrace our identity, who we are, be proud of who we are, and build on the legacy and greatness of the institution. And most importantly, we need to become increasingly self-reliant. Eight and a half years ago, when I came here, 42% of our budget came from state progressions. This past year, 26% of our budget came from state progressions. Everybody says, "That's horrible, don't you want to get it up?" No, I want to get it down. I want to raise enough private money to get it down. Because frankly, we're reaching a point where, you know, it's difficult to manage where we are. We would be better off to have the self-alliance that would come from financial independence. We have to be nimble. We have to be able to change to meet the growing demands and the changing needs of our customers. So what does that mean to you? It means two things, and it's all captured in one word, and I won't read through the slide. It's about the word destination. We want you and everybody in this state, in this country, and in the world to know that Aback has a destination. We know what that is. Our destination is one of greatness. We don't want to be average. We don't want to be just another. We want to be a unique, high-quality institution that attracts people. My dream would be to not have to recruit students. We would have so many people flock here, we'd have to turn them away. You know, we don't have to advertise. We don't have to recruit. Who we are attracts students. That's the second part of destination. We want Aback to be a destination for students. We have quite a few students here tonight. We want Aback to be a destination for state support, for philanthropy, for private support, for partnerships, a place where everybody rests a scholarship, excellence, and success, and we will, we will do quite well. So I'm gonna shift gears as I close out. And we've talked a little bit about who Aback is. Mike gave a great story, what Aback's been the last 100 years. You see where we are today, what we're doing, we're experiencing great success. And I want to talk to you for the last two minutes about the future, three minutes. Y'all all familiar with the novel, The Tale of Two Cities? The rest of my communication tonight is The Tale of Three Cities. Three cities. Next button. Free strategically located cities. Center Lower Park, Tifton. Eastern part of the state, Stecksburg. Western part of the state, Carrollton. What do Tifton, Carrollton, and Stecksburg share in common? You might know?
College towns.
College towns, and all three institutions were founded as congressional district agricultural and mechanical high schools. You might know the rest of the story? The Tale of Three Cities. Next. Population. The green, each of these slides are configured for simplicity. The green line is always Tifton County or Aback. The blue line is always Bullock County or Stecksburg. And the red line is always Carroll County or University of West Georgia. Population of the counties. Don't get into details about numbers. I want you to look at trends. Tifton is not back yet. Tifton has not had any appreciable, can you back it? That's the economic impact. Let's go back another. Very good. Population. We've not had any really appreciable enrollment, you know, the population growth since early 2000s. Look at the populations of Bullock and Carroll County. Now, admittedly, Carroll County has the influence of Metro Atlanta. We will accept that. But Stecksburg, our folks, is pretty much out there in the middle of nowhere. And look at Stecksburg growth. Next slide. Look at the enrollment at the three institutions. Aback on the bottom, West Georgia in the middle, Georgia Southern. Look at those rates of growth. Tale of Three Cities. Next slide. Direct economic impact. This does not include multiplier effects. This is payroll and direct expenses in the community. We're about 70, 75-odd million a year. I ask you a question, city of Tifton. Would you rather be red or blue or green? Would you rather have 400, 500 million direct expenditure or 75 million? I'd rather have 400, 500 million, folks. We went back and we looked at these numbers. I thought about this for a long time. In 1978, I lived in Stecksburg, Georgia. Stecksburg, Georgia was nothing more than Tifton, Georgia in 1978. I would submit to you that the growth of Stecksburg, Georgia is because of Georgia Southern. I hear people in Stecksburg say the worst they weren't here. No, you really don't. You really don't. Nor does Carrollton wish the University of West Georgia was not in Carroll. Next slide. This is my last slide. Now, this is complicated. It is, it's too complicated for a city council to do. But I want to share something for you. I'll explain it as best I can in statistician English. The left-hand bar that says institutional enrollment, these are all indexed to one. You'll notice the green, the green little bar is always one, okay? Because that's what, we divided everything by whatever Aback needs or Tifton needs. So it's always one. So what does that mean? That means the enrollment at Georgia Southern is six times the enrollment at Aback. The enrollment at West Georgia is three and a half times for this day back. Look at that economic impact number. You think they're too correlated? I think they are. Students spend money with every business in this town. Look at the county population, indexed to Tifton County. County sales tax, that's sales tax, in 2012, per 1% of sales. Which one do you want? You want the blue, blue, or red? City of Tifton wants blue or red sales tax or green sales tax? I think you want blue and red. County tax, sales tax, county property tax, digest. Per county income's pretty similar. Number of void in county, and the county unemployment rate's about the same. So my question is, the tale of three cities. Which do you like the best? Now, I'm happy in Tifton, Georgia, but I would be really happy to see Tifton, Georgia become the next Stecksburg or Carrollton. And I think we can do it, but we're gonna have to plan, and we're gonna have to work together, folks. It's gonna take a lot of heavy distance. So I'm gonna close my, close my talk with this final question. I started out with the tale of three cities on that slide. Now I have three questions for one city. First question, what has Tifton done for Aback? And the answer is, a great deal. You just got to tour the building. Were it not for the citizens of Tifton, Captain Tiff, and Harrings, and just their friends, there wouldn't be no Aback. Mike told you, it was a bidding war. So in 1906, Tifton stepped up, and that's why you have this institution. So at least, I mean, my next question for the city of Tifton and Tifton County, what has Tifton done lately? I submit to you, folks, you can recruit all the businesses you want. We're the best thing you've got going. Show me another business in town that puts $260 million of economic impact in your community. I said it before, I'll say it again, businesses come and go, colleges come and grow. Third question, what will Tifton do for Aback in the future? Now, I'm not saying the city of Tifton, I appreciate the relationship we have with the city. The county commission is gonna get the same talk, the very same talk. And I, and I close my comments by challenging you to do this. Those of you who remember, and we've got a lot of data, Scott Blunt didn't make it back, but we worked, did a great deal of work. We have looked at Carroll County, Carrollton, Stecksburg, Bullock County, Tifton County, Aback. We have 60 years of data, all kinds of economic data, employment data, all kinds of things. And I'm telling you, when you draw the lines out and look at the enrollment of Georgia Southern and West Georgia, you see there's a very strong correlation with the economic well-being of those communities related to the growth of those institutions. So I appreciate you being here. I appreciate what you've done for us during the time I've been here and for the past hundreds-plus years. But I would submit to you that it's time for us to get you with it, and it's time for us to prepare for the next level of growth. I'm not saying we need to be an institution of 20,000, still, we might lose the character of Aback if we did that. But I think there is a significant opportunity for growth, and as we move into that position of being the leading, I mean, the largest two bodies of graduates from this college are agriculture and natural resources. 50% of all production agriculture occurs within a 50-mile radius of Tifton, Georgia. We ought to be the primary supplier of human capital for those businesses. Nursing is our second-largest producer of graduates, and all, we all know that the demands of healthcare are growing every day. I am confident that Stafford School of Business, with their focus on small and family-owned businesses, is gonna be our next platform of growth, and those things all add up to opportunity. So thank y'all for being here. I've said enough, and I'll let you go on with your regular business. Thank you, Mayor.
Before we get started, because I can't, well, the mayor can't do it once immediately get started, so I'll just mess up the agenda. Just want to thank David and Mike. I'm gonna give a million dollars away, Mike, for all of you. Say it just one more time.
It is a great day to be alive and have a fun time before the morning only at Aback.
Thank you for all that you might use for David to do. Enjoyed your tour. I'm gonna speak to David, he did everything right, and thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
And I want to say a couple of things before we can start it. First of all, thank Julie. Julie is always thinking out of the box. We wouldn't be here tonight, what, Julie? So thank you for getting us here. We appreciate that, and this has been fantastic. I also want to mention a good friend of ours, Bo Harris, who owns Horse Night at Tifton. Bo came to me proudly, maybe about a middle of this year. And David, he's, I guess you trained him well when you breakfasted with him or something, but he talks about Aback all the time. You'll see, he puts out the post, "Welcome back, Aback." He came to me and he said, "Mayor, why can't we have a big banner that says, 'Welcome back, Aback'?" The economy that Aback puts into our community. And so, Mayor, I would ask you to look into that, and the pressure, I see these things, the banners all across here, I saw something, I forgot. I saw something, I forgot what it is up there today, right there. We love having them. We need to put an A-V-A-T banner, we need to start doing our part, David.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we'll do that, and thank you, Bubba, for mentioning that. Now we'll get into our meeting. I'm going to head to call the board. Uh, I have forgotten to ask anybody to do the prayers. If nobody jumps out, I guess I'll have to do it. You want to do it, Mike? That would be nice.
Let's pray. Father and everybody, thank you for this great place called Tifton, Georgia, and a fantastic place called A-V-A-T, located right in the center of it. Thank you to the many fine people who have made this meeting possible tonight. We just ask you to bless all those gathered here, and help them move Tifton and A-V-A-T forward. Father, we ask you to bless the mayor, the meeting, and everything that goes on. Your precious and holy name, pray.
Amen.
Now, where can Mary and Flack, where can they stand up and look to the Lord and pray? Right away.
I'm praying to the Jesus of life, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every fineness and justice.
Y'all also remember our proof, we still have proof of their fight right now. This country is free, uh, just because of my work up in the day, it's a free, it's a conflict. Dear, alive, and may. And always, always thinking about yourselves. I know I pray for them and their families, uh, every single day. But thank you, think about yourselves, because that's part of the great American, this great state, this great Tifton, this great A-V-A-T. And we wouldn't have what the... Well, we're going to start off here with the, uh, the approval of the council agenda. I'll accept the vote.
I make the motion that we approve the council agenda as presented.
Second. Out of motion, second, for the discussion. Seeing all in favor, please, in the right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Ron, that's your guy. Marona's a city clerk, and she's really more than that. She usually, we're sitting on the bench, and she sits down to see how we all voted, so I'll be communicating with her tonight, for sure.
Thank you.
Nobody does it, raise a hand. Now we're going to have to square a y in Mark Beederman to the HPC. Mark, are you with us or not?
Of course you are.
I saw it earlier. I think I called you, you calling, uh, trip, uh, that was that attempt. You were hiking. That was in the great theater vermin. I'm on it. I'll tell you what, if I do more hiking, I want to be with you all week. Well, you're welcome, come with me anytime you like, Mayor. Uh, aside of six foot six, if I can make castles that big, you know.
We make, I make that big.
And I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Oh, I'm sorry, the plan is on. No, it is, it's dark. I think that's what you said, you told me that, please. Historic Preservation. That's what you said, and we're going to, she ever could get that again. Historic Preservation, you said, I go to the United States. So approval said, of this city, and that I will support and defend the charter of this city, which Tifton, it was the Constitution of Law of State of Georgia, and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings and bodies which I have appointed with the prominence of the majority. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council, and the rules of disclosure after the forever too. Unless disqualified by the standard for conflicts of, of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions provided which I have appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the city attorney. And you'll raise your hands up. And you agree with what I said? I do. You're welcome, of course, we so do appreciate it. You may. Yeah, Mark, with the pity of what we have in Tifton, we have a lot, a lot of boards. We have no money, uh, we have no free bills, uh, and you work hard. Sometimes you get a room full of people coming and saying, "We want it this way, or we want it that way." Thank God we're willing to stand up and come and be on these boards and do their civic duty. So thank you, sir.
We're going to make a last question.
Oh, we, uh, generally we have a meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, we always ask if anybody wants to do any citizen input. We give you about five minutes to come up and talk about anything you want to talk about. Uh, and the way we look at it is that, that, uh, our citizens, well over seventeen thousand of them, are actually our bosses. We work for them, they don't work for us. So we enjoy hearing from our citizens. If there's anybody out tonight that wants to get up here and vote, and use your name and your address, feel free to come up and talk away for a little while. Use your name back here, that'd be fine. Listen, you're, you're one of our citizens, you're our bosses, and you, you, uh, and we love that. I don't believe anybody wants to talk, and that's good, that'll be fine. All right, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes, uh, the minutes of the October the sixth, twenty-fourteen, regular council meeting, and the October sixteenth, twenty-fourteen, council workshop.
I make a motion to approve.
Item one, approval of minutes from October sixth, council meeting, and October sixteenth, council workshop.
Second. Out of motion, second, for the discussion. Seeing all in favor, please, in the right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That is your answer. Item two is a resolution approving a contract with Golden Environmental LLC for solid waste collection and disposable, disposal and recycling. And authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
The mayor and council. Uh, people told several months ago, and I mean, several months ago, more like two years almost now.
Got it.
Uh, we've had numerous meetings and, uh, about how's the best way to provide solid waste collection and disposal services for the citizens of Tifton. We had a joint meeting with the city, uh, City of Tifton, City Council, and the, uh, Tifton County Commission. And at that meeting, well, actually, we had to agree, but at the final meeting, uh, city council and county commission voted unanimously to award the proposal of Golden Environmental as the primary collection service for the city and the county. Uh, since that meeting, we've had several other meetings with Mr. Golden, and the, uh, city attorney, county attorney, and county manager, and city manager. Through these meetings, we've been able to hammer out a contract for both the city and the county. There will be separate contracts, and, uh, thanks, Mr. Will Mont, for your hard work putting this document together. I mean, this has been a challenge. And, uh, thank Mr. Golden for all his input, and Ricky Hobbie, our landfill superintendent and solid waste director. Between all of us, we were able to get this team effort going, and we've actually hammered out the contract that you've been providing and did up to you last week for your review. Uh, we had a few comments from council, uh, we've addressed those comments. Uh, and, and the contract that you have afforded is a very good and, uh, hopefully, a long-term agreement that will have Golden Environmental provide collection services. What those services entail are the collection of solid, or your municipal solid waste household garbage. Most of the week, uh, you'll be able to have curbside recycling picked up every other week, as well as bulky items, your sofas or refrigerators, or whatever the, you're trying to clean out the garage and get rid of every other week. And then we'll have the, uh, yard debris picked up every other week. And all of that will be done inside the city of Tifton for fifteen dollars and thirteen cents per month. You're currently paying about twenty-one dollars a month through service for that service, and it does come in through, uh, curbside recycling. So thanks to Mr. Golden for putting that package together, of course. If you see, looking at item A, it's got all the other commercial rates and recycling rates in there. I won't go through all this tonight, but at item A, the contract addresses all of those issues. Um, so the resolution that you have for you is to authorize, number one, approve the contract, and number two, authorize the city manager to enter into that contract with Golden Environmental. I undertake any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Mayor, thank y'all, staff, attorney, everybody, all that hard work, and we just thank you for your patience. You know, this took quite some time. We will go right now. Uh, I will accept the motion.
I make a motion to approve contract with Golden Environmental LLC for solid waste collection, disposal and recyclers, and authorizing city manager to execute the contract.
Second. Out of motion, second, for the discussion. Seeing all in favor, please, in the right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all aye, all opposed, uh, signify we're in here, right hand, saying aye. That would be four, uh, four and one. Now, in other business, we've got, uh, I don't know, three here, the war proposal, the landfill excavator, the Yancey Brothers, and the amount of, uh, two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. That, uh, I never went over that in the workshop, so, and I meant to bring that up to, uh, folks. We don't just sit here and do this, uh, we can have a workshop, a time to have email back and forth, uh, so you kind of know what's going on, you know. Ricky, would you like to come up and, uh, handle this one against the other one as well?
As y'all were told, we have workshop this out, these two items here, one is the truck mounted hydraulic excavator for the landfill. Uh, this item was not actually in our budget for the year, but, uh, we're looking at you, requesting to use the funds from the sanitation portion of the solid waste fund because of the transition going to, uh, Mr. Bill, uh, to purchase this excavator for the landfill. Uh, it's on a five-year buyback program. There's a replacement machine that's nineteen ninety-eight, dirt pan, which will be used to excavate dirt and cut garbage. Uh, we had four proposals, sent out four, turned with three meeting specs. And the amount of budgeted amount was two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. And staff recommends awarding proposal to Yancey Brothers Company, Valdosta, with a proposal for two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three, with a net year fi- uh, five-year cost of one-hundred-and-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars. The other item was the, uh, huge articulated off-highway dump truck. This is the wish to haul the dirt to the landfill working face. We sent out four proposals, four returned with one meeting specs. The budgeted funds for this was three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand from our capital improvement, uh, program. And this machine also carries a powertrain, hydraulics, and pumps, warranty good until two-twenty-four, twenty-nineteen, or six thousand dollars, whichever comes first. There are approximately sixteen-hundred-and-fifty hours of use on this machine at present time. Staff recommends awarding proposal to ASC Construction Equipment of Beaufort, Georgia, with a proposal for two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. No questions?
No questions. Rob, could I, uh, take a vote of the secretary?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, uh, ask, we do number three first, which is the landfill excavator? I can have a vote for me?
I'll go ahead, please.
Go ahead, Miss Ben.
Okay, I was going to say, I make a motion that we award the landfill excavator proposal to Yancey Brothers, the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars.
I'll second that.
Out of motion, second, for the discussion. Seeing all in favor, please, in the right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That is your answer. All right, same for, uh, item four.
I make a motion for war proposal, landfill excavator, Yancey Brothers.
Is that number five?
I'm sorry.
No, it's number four. The number. You know what happened to me last week, David?
Well, I'm sorry. Uh, war proposal, landfill, uh, articulated off-highway dump truck to ASC Construction Equipment, the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Number three.
Second.
Your brother, sir? All in favor, say my right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all those, um, voting note, please raise your right hand. I have, uh, four ayes and one aye. Now, I've got four on mine, y'all don't have four.
We're missing, we're actually missing number three.
Number three, Thomas.
Number three.
Oh, well, somebody wrote number three. Okay, well, we did, we did, we always do. But when we know what we are, we get to the end. Good. Now, mine's five, which should look like the last one, unless someone has something different. It is the board report from... Our, I see, first, I remember.
I'm going to tell you, yeah, I'm going to tell you. Um, board report is, I want to report back to you for the Southern Board of Appeals. As requested, I contacted Dale Sumner, Jean Corson, and Freddie Walker. Um, Dale Sumner and Freddie Walker do not wish to be reappointed to the board. Um, Mr. Sumner is making plans to, um, relocate. Freddie Walker says he's just getting too old and wants to pass the gauntlet on to some younger folks. Jean Corson says she would be happy to be reappointed if that was your wish. So at this point, we have a reappointment for Jean Corson.
Can we move on that tonight?
If you wish.
I'll wait for you. Did anybody follow the voting, the voting, the voting?
I make the motion to reappoint, uh, Jean Corson to the Golden Board of Appeals.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, for the discussion.
I do, Rob, I wouldn't, wouldn't that term end, is that a?
It ends November the thirtieth.
Okay.
All in favor, please, in the right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That is your answer.
If you all wish, I can request from the other folks that can continue the service, and so we can finally replace them. And if anyone would like to serve on one of our boards, whether it be left or right, you, uh, you can give me a call or come by City Hall, so we can, we can give you an indication.
And Ron, you're a doctor, one of the nine letters.
Yes, sir.
That'd be a great project for some American government status, huh?
Yeah, I believe Chris, uh, I believe, I believe y'all can get eight, ten, eleven. We got all the way on the aisle. You can get it out. Be careful, someone will do that. Well, does anybody have to thank y'all? Say a thank you again. Thank you, man, thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you, sir, thank you for everything that you've all been doing. And thanks, everybody, for helping, I pledge my, God bless America.